And we'll move on to the first item on our agenda, a review of comments to the state clearinghouse regarding transfer property to Terrapin Development Corporation. Mr. Summers will be starting us off and I'll invite, or we have several guests in the audience who I believe are present in this matter, and please feel free to come forward. We have Carlo Colella, Vice President for Administration at the University of Maryland, and Ed McGuinness, also from the university, our State Senator Jim Rosepeth, and one of our three delegates, Stuslin, Peany, Melnick, from District 21.
Mr. Mayor, and actually Terry Schum, our Planning Director, is going to start this topic on.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, as we learned recently, the University of Maryland and the University of Maryland Foundation formed a development corporation that's known as Terrapin Development Company? Is that right? Okay. And the purpose of this company is to really take the lead, as I understand it, in real estate development matters that pertain to land that's been held by the university, and may be acquired by the university in the future, and by the University of Maryland Foundation. So, this is, again, a more, as I understand it, a more efficient way for them to proceed with their real estate-related activities. So, this new company can buy land, sell land, lease land, you know, dispose of land, make development deals, et cetera. So, as part of this, both the university and the foundation are contributing property to this company. And what's before you tonight is a clearinghouse review of 10 properties that the University of Maryland proposes to contribute to the company. And as you know from reading the information, three properties will go in immediately, and seven could go in over the next 10 years or so. And I imagine you could add additional properties over time if you so choose, but they would have to go through another Board of Public Works process. So, there is a state process for disposal of real property, and the university has to follow that process. And this clearinghouse review is a step in that process. So, the Board of Public Works has to approve the surplusing of this property. Again, the review is part of that process, so any comments that are gathered during the clearinghouse review will be given to the Board of Public Works prior to them making a decision. It's my understanding that there is a referral to the Senate and House committees, and they have a 45-day review as part of this process. And then the Board of Public Works has to give final approval of the disposition of the land. So, what the university, I believe, is asking the board to do at this time is to give upfront approval of disposing of this, of transferring the property to the TDC. And once the property transfers to the TDC, that's it. There'll be no more going back to the Board of Public Works for, you know, any additional review, because the TDC will be, you know, a private corporation. So, typically, in a disposal process, the Board of Public Works would say, oh, okay, we approve you selling this property to Mrs. Jones at X amount of money, and, you know, that's it. So, instead, approval is being given upfront for these properties to go to the development company, and the development company will later, it's likely, sell or ground lease the property to another entity, a developer, more than likely, or maybe the university gets it back for a public use. So, that's my understanding, and Carlo and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong about that. So, the 10 properties are discussed in detail in the clearinghouse material. There's a map of each property, and the intended use of the property, if known by the university, is indicated. So, I've just tried to summarize that list in the memo that I provided you. If you look on the screen, all of the property that is proposed now to go into the TDC, including foundation property, which is not part of the clearinghouse list, is shown on the map on the screen. It's hard to read, but, you know, hopefully you've looked at the material in detail, so you're familiar with the individual properties. So, these properties are mostly along Route 1, some are in the transit district area, are they? No, not really. Most are along Route 1 or just off Route 1. And these are important properties. So, I think the city's key concern here ought to be the future disposition of the property, what ultimately is going to be done with them, because right at this time, you do not have detailed plans for any of these properties. You have an intended use, which was stated in the clearinghouse forms, and also, some information is included in the draft business plan for the TDC. So, you know, there's, you know, nothing's proposed for some of the properties. Some might, you know, change in the short term, and others are just proposed for long-term So, you know, in staff's opinion, and this has been discussed with the city manager and the assistant city manager as well, we don't think this is a bad idea. In fact, we think the creation of the TDC is probably a more efficient way for the university to go about developing their property or the foundation. I mean, you know, working together through this company, it just seems like a more efficient, organized way of doing it. So, the key comment from staff's end is that because of the importance of these properties, given their key locations and their ability to transform, you know, some of the city in various locations, you know, it really is about us, you know, changing our downtown and the corridor. So, the city needs to be part of the process in terms of planning for these properties. And I think the TDC, therefore, needs to be really transparent with the city about their intentions for these properties. And I think if that happens, this is just a win-win for all of us. So, therefore, staff has recommended a couple of specific comments about the properties listed, and the Metzeraut Road properties, I think you know, aren't actually in the city at this time. So, it would be important for those properties to be annexed to the city at the time something is proposed to happen with them. And I think those are probably in the long-term stack of properties. And it's, the detailed comments are really about the properties that are listed today, but it really should apply to any property that becomes a part of the TDC going forward, that the city should be consulted prior to any ground leases or any sale of the property. And clearly, in planning for a disposition to a developer in particular, the planning process should be done in conjunction with the city and the community, you know, other stakeholders outside the university, prior to these properties being, you know, ground-leased or sold, or before they enter the development review process. We don't want to learn about this when we get a referral from Park and Planning. So, that's the key thing, just the university and the foundation and the TDC becoming transparent and just working collaboratively with the city, like we've been doing in our recent past. So, really, that's all that I have to say. And Mr. Summers, if you'd like to add to this?
Sure, thank you. I think you did a wonderful job, and I just want to emphasize that the whole key of working together and doing it in a way that's transparent, and I don't think anybody wants any surprises. And, you know, we've said we want to be part of that process. We want to be part of the planning process. You know, this is going to support and should support, as I understand, Greater College Park, which, of course, we're very much a part of. So, I think you've summed it up nicely. I don't really think I need to say anything beyond that, other than what I said. You did a great job. Thank you.
Sure.
Why don't we start with questions from Ms. Schum, and then we can hear from some of our guests. Any, Dr. Kabir?
Thank you so much for summarizing it. So, I, as I said in the last meeting, I'm excited by the fact that some of these properties will be added to city's tax base, which is a good thing, and also, they will help revitalize downtown, part of College Park, definitely. The comments you have in your staff report, how do you envision this will be included? Will this be part of a MOU or kind of document with the TDC the city will be having, or?
Not necessarily. I think, I mean, I haven't specifically said that in these comments. I suppose it could go in that direction. I envision these as being maybe conditions that the board would place on the university, which would be carried through to the TDC. You know, I'm not that familiar with the Board of Public Works and what these, you know, what it looks like, but the board can place conditions on the surplusing and the ultimate disposition of the properties. That's within their ability. So, we might want to be more specific in that regard. I am, you know, that's up for discussion.
Exactly. So, I'm looking forward to that, having that kind of discussions, and definitely, maybe the university can help with that, if you want to proceed on that. Thank you.
Additional questions for Ms. Schum? Okay. Mr. Col, would you like to talk about the proposal, what the purpose of this is, anything that you have to add to Ms. Schum's, what Ms. Schum's?
Happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you council members and staff. And let me just start by expressing my appreciation to return here. We were here four or five weeks ago, and happy that, in that time, we've had the opportunity to meet with a multitude of folks to better explain what our intention is here in terms of moving forward with responsible development. Want to thank staff, and particularly Ms. Schum, for her analysis, and I think she described very thoughtfully the proposal. Make a couple of, just underscore a couple of points with regard to any future property, if there were to be any future university property that would be made available to TDC. We would have to go through the same exact process. There would be a declaration, you know, a letter to the clearinghouse seeking a declaration of surplus, go through the same notification period, and, you know, review action by the board first for disposition, and subsequently for transaction. So, the scope of this request is specifically with the 10 university partials that are identified, and as was pointed out, the majority of those properties are along Baltimore Avenue, in fact, all but one. And most of those properties, at one point, were part of some version of the East Campus redevelopment, which I think most people around the table know we've been working to bring about for, you know, for a long time, and, you know, we're making some progress, and we want to, really, more than anything else, just continue that progress. The university and the foundation, working with the city and the county in the last several years, has, I think, made some very good things happen. And what we thought that TDC could do is to create a structure that turns what has been sort of successful ad hoc activity into a more formalized, and one that sort of joins together the university and its affiliated foundation, and keeps its focus on the properties that are identified here along Baltimore Avenue. Just in addition to Dr. Kabir's comments about the properties going on the tax rolls once they are transferred, would also underscore that by having these properties transferred, we now are into the routine zoning and entitlement process that other development goes through. And that affords, in our view, a more extensive and robust amount of interaction between the city, community, county, and development proposals. And, you know, just by way of example, you know, the hotel is an example of a property that, you know, sort of the microcosm of what we're proposing to do here. We went through a process of getting the approval by the Board of Public Works to sell that land at the foundation, and then the foundation, in turn, had a development agreement and a ground lease. And as most of you will recall, that hotel actually, you know, started off by Charette, which Ms. Schum was a participant of, and we had, I think, a very good dialogue along the way, multiple meetings here with the city council on that hotel, and I think we're all very excited about what is about to open up. So, why are we seeking to move these properties into TDC now? And what I want to sort of underscore is, all development activity entails risk, and the, under the normal process, there's the, you know, you got to get through an entitlement activity that can take quite a bit of time. And without understanding the sort of control and ownership of the land, asking developers to move forward without clarity on the disposition of the land, and then layering on top of that, the uncertainty with the entitlement process is, makes the development activity significantly more complicated and more risky. So, by moving these properties, three of them immediately, and some of them, seven of them with an option, we bring certainty to at least the control of the land and the process by which the detailed site plans will be reviewed, permits will be issued, and all the normal things. So, we think that compared to the current state, where development on university land need only go through a mandatory referral process, it's just a comment. It has no, you know, it doesn't carry the weight that a county approval does. And so, we think that this really enhances the opportunity for input by the community, and, you know, we take that very seriously. And as I may have mentioned to a couple of folks, unlike a developer who may be here bringing a project forward and then selling that project, we're here for the long haul, so it's in our interest to have a very good interaction with the community all the way through. I want to thank the staff for their review, and the recommendations that are included are things that we are supportive of. The annexation, just to be completely clear, it'd be something that I'd have to go back to the TDC board, but I certainly would advocate for that at the point in time that they move forward, you know, a little bit of a detail as to whether that's an isolated enclave, but, I mean, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, folks can work through. But in principle, when those things move forward, I would advocate for that. And the other recommendations about consultation and notification and inclusion are things that we would be looking forward to doing. So, with that, I just would like, again, thank the staff for the recommendations and seek your support.
Thank you, Ms. Colella. Questions? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Colella, could you do me a favor? You know, those who are out there watching tonight have not had an explanation of what the, about the properties on Metzeraut Road.
Right.
I have actually sat through the presentation, which was very good, actually.
Thank you.
And I would like our residents in District 4 and all our other districts to have a better understanding about that, those particular properties.
Happy to clarify that. So, those properties were part of a, what I'll call, a package deal in order for the Quality Inn to come under the control of the foundation. When, as part of our work to bring about high-quality mixed-use development on the Baltimore Avenue, we approached the owner of the Quality Inn and interested, you know, explored acquisition of that property. And in order for that to happen, it was made clear that there's another property that had some other, it was bought prospectively and things didn't materialize. So, candidly, the, in order to obtain the Quality Inn, the Metzeraut Properties, what's called the Metzeraut Properties, had to be worked out. And how we, at that time, again, without a Terrapin Development Company formed, how we elected to move forward with that was for the foundation to acquire the Quality Inn and the university to acquire the Metzeraut Properties. This company that is being, that has been formed, the, it's two members, the university and its affiliated foundation. Each member has put in cash, and the foundation's properties are in, and the university is seeking to move its, the identified properties in. The ownership of that company is, in terms of distribution of any revenues, should there ever be any revenues, net revenues, is in proportion to the contributions in. So, in order for the university to get the credit in the company in terms of an equity stake reflecting the purchase of the Metzeraut Properties, that's why they needed to go in. So, that's, hopefully, that's, and it's a little bit complicated, but hopefully that creeps things up. We think that's an area, by the way, and I think, I don't know how much detail is in the draft business plan, but that's a predominantly residential area. We expect that the character of that neighborhood, I mean, that we think of that as a potentially ideal place for, you know, residential faculty, staff, maybe some townhomes, or something along those lines. But we see that as very much residential in character and likely continue to keep it that way.
Thank you. And I would just like to note, for those who are watching, that I believe Ms. Schum stated somewhere here that if we would like to see those properties annexed into the city eventually.
Yes, I noted that. And I understand that, and as I said, it's not in the city currently. It's something I would need to consult with the TDC board, but I certainly would advocate for that. I think that, I mean, all of this activity is meant to be done in partnership with the city, and putting ourselves into the normal process, we think, helps. And I will advocate for that, and the other recommendations I can accept, sitting here.
Thank you.
Do we know what the zoning of those properties, the Metzeraut Road properties currently is? Are they zoned R80? Okay. Nice. And that's, what is R80? That's like, this large lot, large lot residential?
It's a large lot. I think it's about 9,500 square foot lot.
Like one house and 200 acres.
Yeah. So, it's, it's a little larger lot than the R55.
Okay. I know that, yeah, I know that one of those properties used to be a swimming pool. Let's now build it.
Yes, I swim in there.
Yeah.
And we filled that pool in immediately upon acquiring that property, so.
Can understand why. Ms. Hol.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Colella, as always, for a very lucid presentation. My question is, if you could explain a little bit about the Board of Public Works process and where this is in that process, including the timeline that you anticipate for that review?
Sure. So, to start this process off, we identify the properties that we intend to surplus. It goes to the Maryland Department of Planning and to the department, I guess, the clearinghouse review, and the clearinghouse circulates information to interested parties and seeks input. At some point, they write a report that is available to the Board of Public Works. An agenda item gets moved forward to the Board of Public Works, seeking approval of the disposition of the surplus properties. The Board of Public Works takes the clearinghouse report into consideration, along with other input, acts on that request. If they approve that request, then notification goes to the two committees that were mentioned previously. There's a minimum of a 45-day waiting period, after which, they go to the Board of Public Works for a second time to approve the transaction. So, timeline, we, the review period for the clearinghouse was adjusted to August 9th, and then, upon the clearinghouse's review, then the university could move forward, seeking to put the disposition agenda item forward to the Board of Public Works. So, that could be, say, mid to late September, and then, if that were acted upon and approved then, then a 45-day period after that would be, the earliest there would be action for approval of the transaction.
So, I'm just trying to get my head around this. So, the clearinghouse, you anticipate, would write its report within about a month of the closure of the comment period, or?
I would think so, yeah. I think, yes, I would think so.
It varies. There's no set time. It depends upon their workload, and so there really is no set time, hopefully 30 days, but it's been, sometimes it's been a little bit shorter, sometimes it's been a little bit longer.
And so, then, really, the next thing that happens after that is the Board of Public Works?
The first step of the Board of Public Works, then the first step is merely a declaration that these properties are surplus. So, that's all that happens at step one at BPW.
And what happens at step two?
Step two, after that 45-day waiting period, after the legislative referral at step two, then the actual transaction is considered by the Board of Public Works. So, the Board of Public Works will not be considering the conveyance of these properties to Terrapin Development Company, LLC, until the second of the two meetings, which would take place, I kind of scribbled it out, November, mid-November.
And I'm just wondering, which of those two is kind of the bigger step? So, once a decision is made about surplusing the properties, it's?
Nothing changes to the properties. Nothing changes with respect to the ownership.
It seems like if you've made a decision to surplus them, then it's not?
It certainly telegraphs intent. There's no question about that.
Right. Thank you.
What is the, a follow-up question to that, what does the, what does the review consist of at that point in the Board of Public Works? Are they, do they, during the 45-day period, do they look at this at all? Are they, are they looking at the, what do they go through? What do they?
During, during the period between step one and step two?
Yeah.
The Board of Public Works does nothing. The legislative committees can look at it, and there's actually a provision that I've never seen implemented, where actually the General Assembly can call the matter, basically call the matter up for the next session.
Absolutely. I know about that one.
Did you know about that one?
I did know about that one.
So, that is what happens during that 45-day waiting period.
All right, thanks. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, could we expand on that a little bit, Senator? Because what are you reviewing, and are you accepting comments from?
Absolutely. I mean, if I might, Mr. Mayor, just a little context around this. I think some of the discussion of this over the past couple of weeks has treated this as like a minor administrative matter. That is not the way it is viewed by state-elected officials. And I'm not just talking about 21st delegation. I'm talking about the treasurer, I'm talking about the governor, I'm talking about the controller, I'm talking about chairman of the committee to deal with this. The University of Maryland is a state institution, and so the system is set up, and this is what, I say with great respect for my friend Ed in particular, it frustrates the hell out of all the real estate guys on all the campuses, that they got to go through all these hoops to do something with the property. But the attitude of the owners, who are the taxpayers, who are represented by the governor, the control, the treasurer, and the legislature, is you're talking about our property. And so, there's a system that is set up that is very significant, that says, first of all, even before it goes to public works, we want the Department of State Planning to take a look at it, sort of do the kind of staff work at a state level that Terry's doing for you guys. What is the property? Who really owns it? Are there environmental issues? Do a staff analysis. Then, it goes out for comment. That's why, that's the way we found out about this, was the Department of State Planning told you, told us. That's the only way we found out about this. So, you get comment, then they assemble the comment, and it goes to the Board of Public Works, and the Board of Public Works has plenary authority, meaning- And the Board of Public Works has plenary authority, meaning they can say yes or they can say no, based on their judgment of the best interests of the state, as to whether it should be surplus. And essentially the concept, if I've been through this with the property, essentially it's, does the state still need the property? That's kind of the binary question, is do they need it, don't they need it? And they can, those three individuals, those three officials can make that decision based on their own criteria. And I know from having talked with two of the three of them about this specific issue and talked with the senior people with the governor, that they have their own pretty significant ideas about this. If they decide to surplus it, then the legislature gets into it. And the legislature has to have review. And exactly as Ed said, if the legislature says, we want to take this up, we don't want it going right to the Board of Public Works, we can do that. If we don't do that, and it goes next to the Board of Public Works, then the Board of Public Works doesn't have to sell this property to the Terrapin Development Corporation. Two votes on the Board of Public Works, they could sell it to the City College Park, they could sell it to Prince George's County, they could sell it to Mark Vogel, they could sell it to, you know, Hillman. They have plenary authority to sell that to who they believe, that's their role, that's their job. And so that's why this is a long process, and I understand, I totally understand why it's frustrating to the folks on campus. But it's designed that way for all property. So let me just stop there and not belabor that issue. Is that responsive?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I have been wondering about that all day.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I do, I do want to give, I mean, besides what you're commenting, you just made it, I'd like to give both you and the delegate a chance to?
Thank you.
To, to comment more broadly, if you'd like to, at this time.
Thank you, absolutely. I'll try not to repeat what we said at the last discussion, but I wanted, I want to at least summarize. I think this is a very good idea. I think it is a well-thought-out concept, and I think if it's done right, it can be tremendously beneficial to the university and to the city and the state. Point number one. Point number two is, I have tremendous confidence in these two gentlemen, as well as Wallace Low, as well as the current leadership on campus, that they operate in good faith, they work with the city in a constructive way, that we have all, we were wanting in the city for decades. And I think it's fair to say, because all of us know us here, is I don't, I think it's fair to say that I've spent a lot of time trying to get the city and the university to work together. I'm thrilled with what's been going on in the last couple of years. You can see it, but you can also feel it. The reason the delegates and I are so concerned about sort of the technical issues here, not the substance, and in fact, the selection of the properties, I, I agree with Terry 100%. Good selection of properties, appropriate selection of properties, and frankly, I would just make this argument, which nobody's addressed, I think they are kind of ambitious enough to be important, but not so ambitious as to be crazy. So I think it's a nice balance between, you know, so I think, I think that's very well-thought-out. The challenge is, this isn't about how much confidence we have in Carlo and in Ed and in Wallace. This is about what's going to happen 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years, 100 years from now, with people here and across the street who we don't know. It is not a theoretical danger that we could have leadership on the campus that doesn't operate the way these folks do today. We've lived that nightmare. And that's not to say we're fighting the last war, but it is to say we remember the last war, and we're trying to avoid any future war. And so the recommendation that Terry made about how to have the city involved in the development of the concepts, and Carlo, I thought, was very eloquent on how the hotel was developed. That was the City University Partnership, which is part of this whole effort, put together a plan that said, let's all get together, Terry organized a charrette, everybody was in the room, it was designed together. And so at the point at which you got into issues, everybody had bought in. There were, there were details, but fundamentally it was designed, we were together on the takeoff so we could be in on the landing. That is definitely the model that I think is important going forward. My only concern, but it's a big concern, is that the property should not be transferred until there is a written, enforceable agreement of some kind between the city and the Terrapin Development Corporation, and potentially the foundation and the university, depending on that. It's exactly the point Terry raised. She raised, her points are exactly right. It's just, they're not enforceable. Now, could they be put into the criteria when the Board of Public Works deals with it? That's a very good idea. That's a very good way to do it. Another way to do it is with a covenant between the corporation and the city. That's another good way to do it. One of the suggestions that I threw out, I'm not wedded to it, was adding a couple of representatives from the city to the board of the corporation. That would give an institutional tie, it would give expertise. I mean, one of the problems with the design of the corporation right now is there are nine board members. None of them live in Prince George's County, let alone in College Park. And the first rule of, of real estate is location, location, location. And so frankly, from a business point of view, it seems commonsensical to me that you'd want some board members who actually have deep knowledge from living in the area. And so my suggestion is that we should work together, the delegation and the city and the university and the foundation and the corporation, to come up with an agreement on how this is going to work. That doesn't exist right now. And my one slight disagreement with the recommendation you have from Terry is that you would vote to approve the transfer of the 10 properties without any agreement about how this is going to operate. Everybody's heart's in the right place, I totally agree with that. But to make sure that people's behavior in the distant future is in line with what Carlo would do if he were there 20 years from now, think of it that way. This is the Colella rule, is we want the future Carlo to behave the way Carlo would. And to do that, I'm pretty confident you got to write something down. I mean, that's why we have laws, that's why we have contracts, that's why we have covenants. And so the delegates and I, and obviously Jocelyn, who we all know well, will speak for herself, but we are in agreement on this, as well as Ben and Barbara. As state officials dealing with a state institution and state land, we have told the Board of Public Works, we've told the Board of Regents, we will not support the transfer of this land to the corporation until there is a written agreement between the parties as to how this is going to operate. And I would hope that the council would, best case, be supportive of that, because I think it's in the interest of the city. If the council, for whatever reason, decides not to do that, I would hope the council would at least be silent on that. I think frankly, I'm just going to be blunt, because we're all among friends, is I think it would be embarrassing for the city to agree to the transfer of property without having a written agreement to meet the standards that your staff laid out about how this should operate. And obviously, you'll do what you think is right, you always do, and seriously, as a citizen, I really appreciate, I always brag about, I live in College Park, they got their shit together. I really do.
Sorry, people out there. We'll put some soap in his mouth later, I promise.
I just erased that.
I understand. I understand. But, but in reality, it's sort of as Carlo and Ed, this is going to go very slowly anyway. This is not going to happen fast in many circumstances. I have had conversations with the people at the Department of State Planning, I've had discussions with people in, with the Board of Public Works. The Department of State Planning is way backed up. They have huge turnover in staff. They're not going to pop this out for quite a while anyway. This is not going to go fast. And I think we should take advantage of that to work together, to come to an agreement to keep this era of good feeling together, so that when it gets to the Board of Public Works, we're all standing there together instead of in potential conflict with each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Just promise me you'll take care of any FCC fines and we'll be good.
Fair enough, that's fair, that's fair, that's fair. My apologies.
All right, sorry. Mr. Eric, well, delegate, delegate opinion, I'll.
Thank you. I have to say that I read the report before I came here for the item, and I didn't see anything there regarding any conditions. The way you presented it was beautiful. It just, it was so clear about the need for some MOU or something in writing, which I didn't see there as one of the three conditions. I have to say, I come here with a lot of respect, and I want you to understand where we're coming from. I know we have options where we can stop it later on, you know, but who wants that? You get more with honey than you get with vinegar, okay? So we all get along. Having been on this council in 2003 to 2006, I can talk that the relationships have not always been like they are today, that they used to be quite awful. And thank God for you guys, you have fixed it. But that doesn't mean that people that are going to come in the future will do what you did. So it is imperative, just for, you know, for relationship sake and for prosperity and peace, to be able to put what we understand clearly and transparent in a document. And I tell you what, when you were talking, I took notes. I actually sat here and took two and a half, three pages, although I wrote.
I write paper?
Pretty horrible. And I, and you wrote there, you know, the property for future disposition, that includes property for future disposition, there's no detailed plans, we only have the intended use, there are no conditions. Because of the importance, you said, of the key location where these properties are, they have the ability to transform the city. City has to be part of the process, you said. And it has to be very transparent, you know, very clear terms. So I wrote a question here. I say, how do you guarantee that? I wrote to myself on the side. How can you guarantee it if you only have a person's word and you don't have it in writing? Why would you want to give it up? What are the optics of it? What are your constituents going to say when something happens on Metzgerott, something is built, and you approved it without any conditions at all? Because I can honestly think of the phone calls I'm going to get and the emails I'm going to get out of it, because you know what? We have a very educated constituency, very involved constituency. Love them or dislike them, they are involved because they care. And your house is the biggest investment you have for most people. So I say, and I'm going to leave you with this, that it's, it's, will be great to work together like we've been working together. Do not take it personally. It's not about you, Carlo, not about you, Jim, not about you, Patrick, not about any of us, not about Dr. Low. It's about the future. And to make sure that you have it in plain English, that's why you have an attorney. And as an attorney, I tell you, it is best to get it in writing. You always say, get it in writing, because later on, you always wonder, and it's not the same, because you don't have the institutional knowledge. And that's all I'm going to say respectfully. And thank you for allowing us to come in front of you.
Thank you, delegate. Mr. Colella, I, I don't mean to put you on the spot like this, but I think there's some interest expressed in just making sure, and certainly, and I'm sure that the staff intended when, when we were talking about the, these, these conditions that are in the staff report, intended to find some way to make them, make them binding in some way and make them a firm commitment on the part of the university. So would it, the, the conditions that we have here, would the university have any concern about, about putting those in writing? And obviously, subject to negotiation and figuring out the terms, and as you mentioned, there's questions about the legality of annexation and all those issues. Assuming that we can work all those out, okay, is that something that you'd be willing to, to do?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Great. Well, it sounds like we have a path forward then, and I think, I'm looking at Ms. Ferguson, that's where she comes in, in terms of, in terms of working out the, the terms here, working out an agreement. This is, this will be, right now, we tend to only have this scheduled for a vote to take a position next week. Is that something that, that we feel we could work out between now and next Tuesday?
I'd like to speak to that. I don't think you can work that by next Tuesday. Ken Ullman is on vacation. I talked to the chairman of the board of the Terrapin Development Corporation. He's available, other board members aren't available. In my view, the agreement needs to be with the informed consent of all nine members of the board of the corporation, and the informed consent of the board of the foundation, and the informed consent of the president and the regents. And you can't do that in a week.
May I respond to that? Just to be crystal clear, what I am consenting to are the recommendations as written in the staff report. And I'm confident that those recommendations, I can get the support.
Okay.
I mean, if we're going beyond that, that's a different matter. I mean, the annexation item, a little complicated, but the other three, as written, that's something we can circulate and act on in a quick period of time. I don't want to commit to necessarily next week, but.
That's really, that's all I was saying. I mean, I don't think it has to be dragged out forever.
Good.
But, but, I mean, that's the challenge with pushing this forward without people even knowing each other.
May I ask a question for clarification? The report, the right, three recommendations as written, does not reflect at all what the mayor asked regarding, will you agree to having something in writing, something that, if I, is that what I understood correctly, what you asked? Am I right?
Well, something in writing reflecting the conditions stated in the staff report. So something in writing reflecting that the university commits to consult with the city prior to entering into ground leases for parcels PNC, you know, basically what's in the staff report.
But, but not what we discussed here and what she stated, there was not in the report regarding maybe an MOU or something else and defining more clearly the city's role. That is not in there, correct?
Well, I think what we were talking about is an MOU reflecting or some agreement reflecting the conditions set forth in the staff report.
No, I understood, and you can clarify what you meant by an MOU, Terry.
I believe I didn't say MOU. It was, Councilmember Kabir asked a question regarding it, and I said, perhaps it could be a condition. I mean, the Board of Public Works can place conditions on the transfer and covenants on the property to be transferred. Outside of that, I'm not sure what can happen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I can make a suggestion here. I mean, I think we're getting a little caught up in stuff that's, we shouldn't get caught up in, put it that way, is, I'm very encouraged by what Carlo said. I think the notion that the campus would support the corporation, the campus, and the foundation, signing an agreement with the city before this goes to the Board of Public Works, that reflects protecting the, all the issues that we're talking about, I think is terrific. And I think it can be done. I think to get it done right, we got to take a little bit of time. I'm not talking about a lot of time, but we got to get people back from vacation, we got to get people together, we got to keep talking to each other. Because what I don't want to have happen is sort of a technical agreement that people don't really understand, that the council doesn't understand, that the boards don't understand, that people haven't bought into. So I really think, and this is just a suggestion, is why not just, we agree tonight to have whoever represents the city, the American represents the city, whoever the mayor wants to, the council represents, whoever wants to represent them, someone from the delegation, someone from, from the campus, get with the foundation, get with the other folks, and let's get together as soon as people get together and talk, and try to work out a document that we can bring back to everybody, that could be signed by everybody, and that then could be the basis for the conditions of the Board of Public Works we put in. We'd be all going forward together, saying, we've all agreed to this, we want to put this in there. I think that would be the more amicable and quicker way to get to yes.
Mr. Colella, do you want to comment on that?
Just to repeat that, I was speaking specifically to the recommendations that are listed here, recommended by staff. Those are conditions that, in short order, whether it's in a few days or, you know, a week or a week and a half, in short order, certainly before the item goes to the Board of Public Works, language that memorializes these recommendations, I think we can, I can, on behalf of TDC, I can certainly recommend strongly to the TDC board to accept that, and I'm confident that they would look upon these favorably. So that, that, that's what I, you know, so, language that memorializes these recommendations, I think can be done, you know, in an expeditious and timely way. Beyond that, I, you know, I don't know what we're talking about, so that's a different matter.
Okay. So, so can we get, can we get an agreement together between the city and the, and the university that, or the university and the TDC, rather, that reflects, reflects these conditions, and, and then move forward with that? If it takes a little bit more time to work out the language and make sure we have the full backing of the Board of the TDC before, before we move forward with that? full backing of the board of the TDC, before, before we move forward with that, I don't see why that can't move parallel with the process of going before the, before the Board of Public Works. It sounds like that process is still, is still, still has a long road ahead of it. So, so that could be worked out parallel, but in the meantime, I think we can pursue this and, and work on this as, as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Ms. Stolich?
So I have a couple of questions. One is, I guess I was wondering, the staff report has the comment condition, we're talking about it as a condition, include the city in the development planning process for all properties? And I guess, I wasn't sure what that meant, because it's kind of a, you know, pretty general phrase, and so, you know, and, and I know, you know, as the senator was saying, I, I too like the way that's happening right now, I like it a lot. But, you know, we had, you know, previous experiences, and unfortunately, there's no guarantee that you guys are going to be immortal. And, you know, whoever, whoever follows you may not have your degree of goodwill and collaborative spirit. And so I just, you know, I wonder what, what exactly would be the agreement to just work together? Sounds like it could mean, honestly, anything.
I was actually going to make a comment, that I have a great deal of confidence that Ms. Ferguson and I could get together and turn these four bullet points into a four-page document like that.
All right.
And the details would be fleshed out in that process.
Okay. And so then, my other question was just about the timing, because we currently have a, you know, a date of, is it August 9th for the comments to be provided, but we're talking about a process that seems like it's going to take more than 24 hours, or, I'm sorry, August 9th is next Wednesday, or?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And so I was just wondering, how do we, how do we deal with that? Are you thinking that you could turn, create your, your beautiful four-page document that we're all going to love in one week? Or what, what is the process that you envision?
I'd like to jump in on this. I mean, I, I get what's going on, I get it. And the reality is that, the delegation feels pretty strongly about this. And the reality is that the state decision-makers on this have tremendous sympathy for these concerns. And so, I think it's important that the delegation be included in this conversation, because it is not a foregone conclusion that if Ed and Sue Ellen work up something that fleshes out these words, that that's necessarily going to get the support of the Board of Public Works, period, end of story. And I want something that gets the support of the Board of Public Works. And so, this goes to kind of Jocelyn's point about, let's try to work together, instead again, the conflict, is, we all can agree in general terms to the language that Terry put together, the, and the orientation of it, but as you point out, the devil is in the details. And this is a really devil's in the details issue, because, and this is Jocelyn's point about, get it written then, there is no reason not to take the time to get this right. And I, I would encourage all of us to take the time to get this right, and to get everybody bought into it. I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with Carlo, that he may be able to get this approved by these eight other people who live elsewhere in the United States, but that doesn't mean they really understand it, that doesn't really mean they bought into it, that doesn't mean they really understand the concerns. And for this to work, people got to trust each other, they got to know each other, they got to work through the issues together. And we have time to do that, over the next couple of months. And given that there's no specific development project in line for any of these properties, it just seems kind of cutting off our nose despite our face to try to rush this thing through in a way that's going to lead to a lot of conflict, and instead, and instead can be done in a way that keeps the air of good feeling together. So, I would strongly encourage us not to do a dash to the courthouse, and instead, try to get together and work together to come up with something that, that sort of everybody can feel comfortable with.
Ms. Cook?
Did you read first? Okay, thank you. I want to thank the senator for his wise words. You know, when we, when the, the shopping center across from my neighborhood, what does it even call, I don't even know?
Marketplace.
The marketplace. Well, we never called it. Anyway, so, when that was built, they took the time to create an MOU. And why did they create an MOU? Because they knew there may be problems between the neighborhood across the street and the shopping center. And as Delegate Penny Melnick well knows, we have had problems over the years, and we have gone back to that MOU, and, and our attorney knows that too. We have gone back to it repeatedly. And I don't think it's necessarily, you know, somebody, you know, the Michael Company was doing anything deliberately or anything. I think sometimes, you know, management wasn't what it could have been, and, but we needed that MOU in place, and we still need that MOU in place. So, you know, this is the same thing, except this is on a lot, much larger scale. And so I don't understand why we would be in a hurry to get this done. There's no reason to be in a hurry. All of this that, you know, is coming down the pipeline is going to take years. So, you know, if we wait, you know, two months, three months, to get this agreement in order, and I'm also including an enforceable agreement, you know, about the process, how we could handle any, any problems that we encounter in the future, because it's got to be enforceable. I mean, you know, as the senator said, and I think that the delegate said, you know, if, it's great, you know, we've got a good relationship now, but 10 years from now, and I've been over in my house for more than 15 years now, I mean, that MOU is still there. So, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, 40 years from now, when those, you know, when we need it, we, we will have an agreement, an enforceable agreement in place. So I thank Ms. Shum for the four points that she included there, but I also think that we have to include in that a, an enforceable agreement, and that's going to take some time. But two months, what's two months? You know, three months after, you know, after Labor Day, when everybody comes back from their holiday, you know? As, as the senator said, none of you live here, we're the ones that are going to end up living, you know, with whatever product you have. And we're the ones that are going to hear about it from our constituents. And I know that there are some listening tonight. So I appreciate everything that you're trying to do, but let's, let's be smart about this. Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds like with the, this, the final decision isn't going to the Board of Public Works until November, right?
At the earliest.
At the earliest. There's plenty of time to work out, work out, work out the niceties of this agreement. Right.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment about how much specificity can go into a general understanding like this compared to a specific development project that's brought forward at the time it's brought forward? So the conditions on a specific development project, you, you're dealing with more tangible, here's the intended use, here's the design, here's the impact of parking. So I, I think it's, and that, you know, at least with other projects that go through the entitlement process, gets worked through as part of the detailed site plan review and the comments that go forward. I, I think it's hard to get to a level of specificity like that absent a specific development project. So I, I think, the way I look at this is, we're starting in order to not have both the risk of the disposition of a piece of land, plus the entitlement process, to get, going forward knowing that these lands can be brought to development, and then, the entitlement process is where those specifics about, you know, what conditions go with a proposed development can be fleshed out, because you have material to work with. I think it's very hard to work on that in, in somewhat the abstract.
Mayor, if it could.
Senator.
I agree with Carlo, but I, but I think it's a little bit apples and oranges. I mean, I think we all agree that the specifics of particular developments is in that, is in that process and not in this agreement. I mean, I think, I think we agree with that. I think everybody agrees with that. But I think the process by which, it's exactly Stephanie's point, the process by which we figure out how the city is involved at each stage in the process, that can be figured out before this goes before the Board of Public Works, and should be. In the interest of keeping us all from killing each other, let me make a compromise suggestion. I don't have any, do you have the language in front of you here? Can I look at the language of her recommendations?
Yeah, it's right there.
So, I just want to look at the language, I, I got an idea that might solve the problem if I can find the relevant language.
It's right here.
Transfer, yes, consult, yes. No, but it also, there's also, there's also some language in here about supporting the transfer.
I think, I think you're looking, you're talking about the sentence, the second paragraph, last sentence on little page five, page two of the staff report, staff recommends supporting the project for the BPW with the following comments.
Yes. What I'm going to suggest is, that, take out the, supporting the project before the Board of Public Works. Be silent on that. Be silent on that. Forward the comments on the properties, and say, here are our comments on the properties, and annexation and everything else. And then, give us time, because it's going to go slow, to work out what agreement we need to have before we go to the Board of Public Works on the issue. That, to me, sort of solves the problem, because then you don't have to delay this whole effort. You give them the comments, you don't have to ask them to delay the study, because we know they're going to be slow as, as, anyway. And then leave open the question of the council and the delegation, I apologize for keeping, mentioning the delegation, but this is a state institution, this is state land, so that we have time for the delegation, and the city, and the campus, and the foundation, and the, to come to agreement on how this is going to work, answering Stephanie's question. And if that takes us two weeks, which I doubt, great. If it takes us two months, which I think probably is more likely, at least until after Labor Day, I mean, people got to get back, I mean, people are on vacation, and all that kind of stuff. That's okay, because of just the point, is the process is going to go forward, and at the point at which the first consideration by the Board of Public Works come up, we either have an agreement by that time, or we don't have an agreement by that time. So that'd be my suggestion of a compromise here. I hope people might be able to support.
Yeah. Ms. Nagel?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'd like to, I don't see any reason why we can't support it with the condition that there's a written agreement by the time, and when the time comes up, we have the written agreement, or we show that it's not in place.
Same concept.
And, but I also feel like, too, the initial, the initial work, and with all due respect, and I appreciate your interest in College Park, that this should be between the city and the TDC, and that you guys are our checkpoint later on, if something goes wrong. If we don't do our due diligence and protect our residents, or something wrong, we're not able to reach that agreement. Then we have the delegation there, and that's what the legislature's there for, that checkpoint. But, in my opinion, the initial round, we should have the opportunity to do this between the city and the TDC.
I appreciate that. I think ultimately, this is an MOU before, between the city and the university, and I appreciate the delegate's engagement and willingness to help us out with this, but ultimately, it's going to be up to us to, to, to work out the terms and be the ones to enforce this as well. So I think, I think this, this needs to be, this needs to be an agreement between the city and the, and the university.
Let me just be heard on that.
Yeah, please.
I, with all due respect, it is true, and it is your agreement, but later on, we can be involved, and I always believe that you get more with honey, like I said, than you get with vinegar. Why not allow, even if it weren't, let's say if it was another party, in any discussion? I always believe, even when I put in a bill, I bring everyone to the table, whether they're for it or against it, and everyone has noticed, you know, we're not going to agree on everything, but I always allow people to be part of the process. So even if it's your agreement, and that is fine, I don't think it will hurt you to have the delegation be part of it, and be able to give you their opinion on it, especially since later on, the delegation can be heard and get in the middle of it. If they don't agree, why not do it right? I mean, if you're not going to lose, nothing to lose by including the delegation part of the discussion. I, I, I really don't. I don't, I don't get it why human beings can't sit down and try to work something out, and, you know, whether they agree or not, you can come back next week and say, it didn't work out, and the city and the university are in agreement, and the delegation has said, fine, put it up for a vote. We can always be heard later on. But I don't think you lose anything by including the delegation as part of it. And that doesn't mean all four members, you know, it will probably be Jim, who will be part of it, and be able to be, be heard. You don't lose anything at all. But that, that is just my opinion, so you don't have to take it. But I am very, you know, very honest and, and very straight. I don't think you lose anything by having him involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Senator?
Yeah, I don't think anybody can force anybody to do anything. I mean, this is America. So, if the university doesn't want to work with the city, they're not going to work with the city. If the city doesn't want to work with the university, they're not going to work with the university. If the delegation doesn't want to work with the city, the delegation's not going to work with the city. I mean, it don't mean force anybody to do anything. So, I mean, her point about working together, it's kind of like what we've been all aspiring to. I guess I want to underline the fact that no one's surprised, is we, the delegation, represent the people of College Park too. We are not the lobbyists for the city. You have a lobbyist. We are not the lobbyists for the city. We are the state representatives of the people who live in the city. And so, we have an independent responsibility to do what we think is right for the city. And we, we work very hard to get on the same page, which is why we spent a lot of time on this, to try to, so we can get on the same page, because we're stronger together. Sorry to use an old slogan, but it's true, it's totally true. And that's what, that's what concerns me a little bit about some of the dynamics that are driving us apart. And so, if the city wants to go up with a draft, university wants to go up with a draft, we come up with a draft, somebody come up with a draft, that's fine. We should be transparent with each other, we should talk to each other. But the reality is that the Board of Public Works and the legislature are going to look to the delegation as to our position on this.
That's right.
They love the city of College Park, they love the campus, but the fact is, we are the state representatives, and, so they're going to look to where we are on this. And they're, I mean, so the reality is, from everybody's agenda, it's better for us all to be in together and not get in a situation of conflict, so.
I, I appreciate that, and I, I think, I think the point though, that we're trying to make, is that ultimately, this is an agreement, if we're talking about an agreement between the city and the university, and I appreciate that you have your, you have your duty as a District 21 delegation to, to, to represent and do what you feel is best for, for your constituents, as do we.
Yeah, absolutely.
And ultimately, it's going to be up to the council and to have five, at least five votes here to support an agreement that goes forward with the university, and we need to, we need to do what's, what we feel is best for our constituents and the city. So, so, I have Ms. Stolich in the queue?
I'm not sure what I was going to say. Other than, just to reiterate that I, these are the, these are Jim's comments, I very much want to work with the university. I really value our, our working relationship, and, and look forward to that continuing for many years. I think, you know, all of this is really about, not the short term, but the long term. And, so I'm, I'm very encouraged by this discussion. Thank you.
All right. So I think we may have a way forward. And I think right now, our, our, our next step is for next week to put forward a letter supporting the transfer, I think as Ms. Nagel suggested, supporting the transfer under the condition that there is a written agreement between the city and the university.
Saying?
Before approval by the, by the Board of Public Works, setting forth-
Staff's conditions?
Some sort of conditions or terms, I guess.
An agreement, an agreement that covers the points, these particular points.
And will it include that enforceable process that we need?
Enforceable, well, I think that's going to be part of the-
That's what I want to know.
That would be part of, in the agreement that we write, we've done this before, sometimes, mostly we do it beforehand, but sometimes we reserve and say, subject to reaching agreement, that's acceptable to the parties, which we can do here, because you have some time before the Board of Public Works meeting. So there's some time to do that. So you can give the general nod, subject to us getting down to the details and having it in writing, so that everyone is on the same page.
Okay. Sound good? Any questions? Concerns? We all on the same page?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Then, we put that, well, can we put that on consent, or does somebody want to, I mean, people may want to see the-
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Then we put that on, well, can we put that on consent or does somebody want to, I mean, people may want to see the language?
I think we'd like to see a letter before.
Okay.
Oh, we can't put it on consent, no.
Then would somebody like to take it?
I'll take it.
That's our day. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
How did we decide that that conversation was going to take 20 minutes?
I don't know who was thinking that.
Oh, my gosh.
All right. Um-